We're live. What's up, y'all? I meant to do this, not this. What's up, y'all? My name is Stevie Vias. I'm here with Brandon Johnson, candidate for mayor, Kia Sandler, and Freddie Desrocyay from Chicago Votes. We're having a special Shit Talks episode with a very special guest, one of the two remaining candidates out of the, what was it, nine?
Nine.
Yeah, one of the two remaining candidates for mayor for a special Shit Talks episode. We're going to talk about some issues that young people care about tonight. But before we dive into it, I want to give Freddie, maybe you could go first, introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're interested in talking about tonight.
All right. My name is Freddie. I work for Chicago Votes. I am a first generation Haitian American. I went to UIC to study political science and Black Studies. And now I lead our policy work here at Chicago Votes. We are working on restoring the right to vote to people who are currently incarcerated, in line with some of our other work around making Cook County Jail polling location and increasing, you know, the, the access that folks have to access the ballot box.
Word. Kia?
Yeah, my name is Kia Sandler. I'm the Development Manager at Chicago Votes. First generation gang, half Venezuelan, half Trinidadian. I manage our fundraising programs. This is one of our hoodies that you can find at Chicagovotes.com. And yeah, just really here to like support the work that we're doing.
Nice. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, good evening. Brandon Johnson, candidate for mayor of the city of Chicago, but also currently serves as Cook County Commissioner, representing the first district of Cook County. That's the west side of Chicago, the western suburbs. But the best job that I've ever had is that of a public school teacher, teaching middle school, social studies and reading, starting off in Cabrini-Green, USA, and taught at Westinghouse College Prep on the west side of Chicago. My wife and I will be celebrating 25 years of marriage in June, and we are raising our three children, Owen, Ethan, and Brayden.
Love it, love it. So, Mr. Johnson, you're running for mayor. You've been a public servant for some time now. Can you share a little bit with us about what led you to a path of public service? What made you decide you wanted to run for mayor?
Yeah, so for public service, you know, I was raised in a home, you know, with two incredible human beings. My, my parents, they were both pastors. My father worked as a public employee, drove a truck, but was also a carpenter, and raised 10 of us in a home with one bathroom. But here's the thing, though, my parents were also foster parents.
Wow.
So, our home was never this quiet, as we're experiencing right now. With one bathroom, you learn to negotiate early in life.
Right.
And, you know, the greatest, I believe, takeaway that I have grown up in that environment was that we are only as strong as the person who was struggling the most. With one bathroom, there was one go, for everyone to leave the house clean. Now, however, we got to that, that was something that we had to negotiate and figure out.
Right.
And that understanding led me into the career of youth services and youth development. And as I embarked upon youth development and youth services as really just a re- a response, quite frankly, to the type of upbringing that I had, I knew I wanted to do something deeper.
Right.
And that's when I went and got my master's degree in teaching. And, you know, still one of the most dynamic experiences I've ever had. And that's ultimately what led me into running for office. Because for too long in the city of Chicago, and really throughout the country, public accommodations, that's something that we have fought for. Those of us who are descendants of slaves, after emancipation was housing, education, jobs, healthcare, and transportation. Now, we can add environment and access to food, but we have not completed the goal of those of us who are responsible for ultimately building the economy, particularly in the western hemisphere. And so, that's what has been my provocation, to make sure that the goals of our ancestors, all of ours, that we can achieve that, that we can do that through building political power. And so, here I am.
Love it.
Yeah.
Kia, you're young in the civic space, organizing space. As a voter, as an activist organizer, what do you look for in a public servant? More specifically, what do you look for in a mayor?
Yeah, absolutely. I feel like, as somebody who, I was actually a teacher for a year on the city of West Side, North Longdale. And I grew up going to public schools, and I was teaching in a charter system, and it was an adjustment for me. I think it's just really important for me that our elected officials and our public servants are just people who aren't afraid to like be in the communities that they are supposed to be representing. I feel like there's just so much disassociation from who is supposed to be a representative of a neighborhood and that neighborhood. And so, I just really want to be able to look at the people who are supposed to be representing me and see myself in them.
Freddie, same question?
I definitely feel the same. I think that I would like our public servants to have a, a heart of service. I think that sometimes elected office can be a space for people who want to like gain power, as opposed to like really represent the issues of their community. And so, when you say like, we want someone who is not afraid to represent our issues, I want it to be somebody who also has those issues, right? So, instead of like somebody who's a career politician, who's, you know, maybe has family who's been doing this for a while, like why not Auntie from the church? You know what I mean? Why not the bus driver? Why not a teacher? You know, I think that they're more equipped to handle, not handle, but yeah, well, handle, and truly understand like all the nuances. I think that sometimes when you get into places of power, it can become a, a space that cultivates sometimes very simple mindedness. And I think that we have to understand that these are people's lives, right? And so, it's like, it's not simple. So, we have to have people who are ready to do the complex work and want to do it because they have like a heart of service, not just because they are trying to elevate to the next place.
That's beautiful. And in that same vein, you know, you've spoken to like your lived experience and how that's led to your work in public service, how that's led to you, you know, running for mayor. And you specifically named being like a descendant of enslaved Africans, as I am, as I believe Freddie and Kia are as well. And so, it's no secret to anyone that the relationship between Black people and police is not good and has never really been a positive one. And so, I'm curious to hear from you as mayor, what you believe we need to do to create a safe society in Chicago and the role that police have in helping us create that safe society in Chicago. And the same question I want to hear from Kia and Freddie, but we could start with, with you, Mr. Johnson. I'm sure you, I know you've been answering this question a lot, so.
No, it's cool. In fact, the fact that we have been answering this question a lot, it means that we are asking it a lot more than we were four years ago, eight years ago. I actually think it's remarkable that we have literally made policing, not just public safety, but policing a central part of a political discussion. It, it, it should be, right? Because being honest with the people of Chicago and the country of the, the purpose and the creation of policing in America, where protecting capital was the, the, the goal of policing. But the reason why there is strain and stress between policing and Black folks in particular is because we were the product, right? And, you know, the long history of the wealth that this country has gained as a result of free labor by, by a system that brought us into captivity. And, you know, in order for capital and capitalism to work, that was the structure that was created and designed to do just that. And so, now, we have an opportunity in this moment to define the type of society that not only we want, but reflects our values and it's safer.
Right.
And safe. And so, you know, for me, you know, we have an opportunity to actually define policing in a way that is not tethered to the type of structure that has caused those type of strains. Now, look, don't get me wrong, like, this is not going to shift overnight. And so, that's why I've said repeatedly, when we're talking about public safety in particular, if the conversation is solely centered around policing, then Chicago should be the safest place in the world.
Right.
Right? Because we spend more money per capita than, you know, New York and Los Angeles, and, and they have larger economies and, and a, a, a larger population, right? And so, what I've pushed for as a result of the organizing work that has been done in the city of Chicago is for doing what works. And what works is, you want a safe society, you invest in people. And that's why I've made a, a strong commitment to hiring young people. And not just for summer positions, but year-round positions, right? There's a direct correlation between violence reduction and youth employment.
Right.
And, you know, what we have to do as a society is pay attention to the type of economy that has led to the type of behavior and the manifestation of trauma that clearly is being expressed. Look, this is not making excuses for people, but I've been a public school teacher. I've looked into the faces of young people who are discouraged and do not feel seen and heard and valued. And if an 11 and 12-year-old is being accused of heinous crimes or violent crimes, like carjacking, that says a lot more about the society than it does the child.
Right.
Look, my middle son, he's 10, brilliant. The boy don't know where the dirty clothes basket is. Right? You, you know what I'm saying? And so, when we have, you know, these type of accusations that are taking place, that, that's a sign that we have not loved people. And, and as, as, as people, let's just put me running for mayor aside for a second. The most radical thing we can do is actually demonstrate love. That, that, that is, that is the greatest gift we can offer people. We do that. The type of trauma that we've experienced, the abject poverty that our people are living in, it shifts because we are investing based upon where our values are. Well, your heart is, your treasure will be also. That's the last scripture, I promise.
No, you're good with the scripture. Keep them coming. Kia, Freddie, you can respond to what he said or just answer the question yourself, which was, you know, what, what role do police play in making our society, making Chicago safe? Why don't we start with you, Freddie?
I have a few initial thoughts. I, I think, one, I, you know, right now, there's like a lot of resurgence of people reading All About Love by Mel Hux. And so, when we talk about the power of love, she talks about kind of how, as a common culture and a dominant culture, like we are ashamed to say that, right? We are afraid to say that we want to center love because we're afraid of appearing weak. Which in reality, it's like, that is the most transformative, strong force that there is. And love should be a centerpiece of conversations like this. Because the lack of it is why we're experiencing all of these things that we are experiencing. When I think about police and the role that they play, I always think about how organizers in Chicago, when we're talking about public safety and, and just safety in general, you know, they ask people to define, like, what is safety to you? And when people define it, and we go around the room, almost nobody mentioned, like, oh, the police are gonna take these people and like lock them away, and that's gonna make me feel safer. And so, I think the emphasis was on communities, about feeling taken care of. Like you mentioned, feeling loved, feeling like you know that if you don't got it, like somebody else got it, and they're gonna get you. And so, when it comes to police, I don't feel that there is that level of love, right? Because we talked about, Mel Hux talks about how there's no, like, no love can exist where domination exists, right? So, when I think about how the, the punitive role that police play in our society, right? It's like, we are not showing these kids love. It's, it's like a, they're a figure of harm, of dominion, of, of hierarchical structure that says, I am the one who gets to enforce these rules that you have to follow. And I don't, I'm not gonna fully like consider the nuances of why you might have had to make these decisions, right? And so, I don't, can't say that I fully know, like, what I believe, like the role that police should play in as far as like our safety is concerned. But I do know that I don't feel that they are contributing to our safety. And in fact, I would even maybe go as far as to say, in, in some communities, they're doing more harm. And I don't even think that, that's, that's that far to say, so. I think that that is an important question. Like you said, I'm glad that candidates are talking about it and bringing it up. Because I do think that the future of Chicago depends on how we kind of navigate through the issue of policing and safety.
Yeah, I totally agree. I feel like this, this idea of love and policing are like such opposites in my head, right? These aren't words that I've ever associated together because I've never felt loved or protected by the police in any community, you know? I feel like it's nice to hear the acknowledgement that, you know, a bigger police budget is not going to increase safety, right? Like, we can write that, that's a fact, that's proven. I think, I want to, when I think about safety, when I think about like, these ideas of like public and safety, because I think we, are there terms that are thrown around, and sometimes people use them in very different ways. And you can almost become desensitized to even like, what does that even mean, public safety? Some people are talking about police, some people are talking about parking meters, it's very confusing. But I think, you know, I just want to live in a society where if I am in an emergency situation, if I need aid, if I need help, if I need support, I don't want to have to call the same person that I'm supposed to call if I am being attacked, right? Or if I am being robbed. Like, that doesn't make any sense in my mind. So, when I think about public safety and I think about the future, I want to see creative, like imaginative ways of addressing harm and addressing like issues that are already existing. If I am, like, if I have a home and I suddenly don't the next day, that's an emergency situation. If I don't feel safe walking down the street, that's an emergency situation. If I, you know, am like with a group of people and I suddenly like need to get out of that situation, like, that's an emergency situation. I would like to feel protected by my own community, you know, versus like trying to find alternative ways to get out of emergency situations because I don't feel safe calling the police. So, yeah, I guess that's just kind of where I'm at. Like, I would, I mean, it shouldn't be like radical, this idea that everybody should be able to look, you know, for help in certain ways. But I think, like, providing alternative forms of protection is like the kind of public safety that I want to see.
So, you mentioned the police budget in Chicago is the biggest police budget in the country, right?
Yeah, one of them. We spend more per capita than anywhere else.
Got it.
Now, there is places like Milwaukee that have a bigger budget.
Got it.
But per capita, yeah, we're, we're at the top.
And what is the rate of solving crimes in Chicago?
Yeah. We don't solve crimes in Chicago. Now, look, I think the official rate is anywhere between 20, 23%. I've heard it as high as 28%. But the point is, the vast majority of, of crime that takes place in the city of Chicago, it goes unsolved. Yeah, but I want to pick up on a thread, Kia, right? Say your name right. Pick up on a thread that she mentioned, because this was actually helpful for me. We've, we've, we've talked repeatedly about mental health and the mental health crises that we are all enduring and experiencing. And because we have stronger language and a better understanding of our mental health, we're, we're, we're in a better position to treat it. So, I remember coming up as an adolescent, people talked about depression. But it was, it was, if I could, that it was the most severe example of depression. And it wasn't the type of depression that you just sometimes naturally experience as an adolescent. And because we have, we've have, we've had a history of untreated mental health crises, that it has caused a disconnect between us really identifying these emotional demands that create stress. And we've dismissed them because it's not the most severe form of, of mental health challenges that, you know, we have read about or seen, maybe we, we've even personally experienced. And someone said to me, because they, they know that I've grown up with asthma. And it's much better as an adult, but as a child, I had, it was pretty severe. So, when weather would change, I mean, I, I would be hospitalized regularly. And this mental health provider said something to me and said, imagine having a health crisis. That's, that's an asthma attack, and the police showed up.
Right.
Not, not an inhaler, but a gun.
Right.
So, you know, when you ask that question about just, you know, how we talk about the police budget, we really should be talking about a public safety budget. So that if a crisis occurs, or there's an emergency, there's only one option. There's only one option. Doesn't matter what crises that you are experiencing, there's only one option. And that's a failure.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So, the police aren't solving the crimes. They don't make us feel safe. I think a lot of people got to think about that, just sit with that reality. 18 to 24-year-olds in the general election on, what was it, February 28th? Seems so long ago.
Who you telling?
In general, there were only 30, 32% was the voter turnout. 18 to 24-year-olds were the lowest to, to participate. There is not a lot of 18 to 24-year-olds who voted in this election. Why do you think that is, Freddie?
Well, I, I think for many reasons. I think, one, I think there are barriers. Two, I think for some people, I think that they don't feel as if their needs are adequately being addressed or, or represented even. So, I think for some folks, they're like, why would I spend my time doing those things? I think a lot of times, like, people don't know, like, what's going on. And I think that speaks to the lack of public education that's out there. I think that, also, I feel like as we've grown up, like, I'm Gen Z. So, like, we've come up, you know, post 9/11. And I think like, we've watched our government like not deliver the things that like we need, right? Like, I feel like the continuous, just like material things that you need immediately. I think a lot of times, like, when we're voting, we're asking people to think of a long-term solution to their very immediate problem. And so, I think when we are, I think young people want to see results. Like, they want to see, we have immediate problems that we need immediate results to. And I think that like, we're watching as our country struggles to meet the needs that are very emergent. Like, we watched the pandemic, we watched how that was handled. It's like, I think that some people feel, although it, it doesn't matter who we vote for, right? That these issues will still persist. But obviously, it's definitely like more nuanced than that, and I'm interested to hear what you have to say, Kia.
Yeah, I think like, for so many young people, for me, it's like, it can be such an inaccessible process, like, this idea that like people in power can like make decisions that really influence like my life, you know? Because you have a lot of personal autonomy, right? You can not vote, you can opt out of all these different sort of processes, but that doesn't mean that they don't affect you. I think like, there's, and there is such a, you know, there's so much misinformation out there as well. Like, nobody told me what a municipal election was growing up. That was never explained to me. That was something that I had to go out and like self-teach myself, and that's very frustrating. And so, already, there's like, you know, issues with just engaging with the process as a whole. I think young people, I, I think this, you know, election was very interesting, just particularly for Chicago, with nine mayoral candidates, like, that brought a lot of like interesting attention. But ultimately, I think a lot of young people didn't turn out because again, it just can be super like overwhelming to try to engage in and feel like you have a stake in the things that anybody is talking about. I would say that like, definitely civic education is necessary, like more people understanding like how their role can make a difference. But I also think like, there's a, yeah, there's a lot of discouragement in believing that, you know, it can really make a difference.
So.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I feel partly responsible. I'm a social studies teacher. Some of you started nodding off as soon as I said that. So, when I, when I taught middle school, like, social studies wasn't a thing in Chicago public schools until you got to seventh grade.
Right.
You know, in many instances, in many schools, you don't teach social studies, you don't teach history. And they get to seventh grade and it's like, yo, read this constitution.
Right.
And you better pass it, otherwise you're not gonna, you know, you're, you're gonna fail grammar school.
Right.
Um, it's the way we throw it on people, you know, and it's not, it's not connected, it's not relatable. One of the best moments I've ever had, I'm gonna bore you real quick, but I was trying to help, you know, my seventh graders understand what lobbying was and how it gets real petty and personal. You know, a lot of times, you can't get legislation passed because someone, you know, upset someone else some time ago, and you just can't get it done. And so, and so, I was giving this example, you know, I'll never forget, Deshaun Brown, one of the most brilliant minds I've ever taught, I, I promise you. And I was trying to give an example, like, yo, if you were being bullied and this person kept taking your milk, and every single day, you keep taking their milk, and, you know, you don't forget that, right? And now, all of a sudden, you show up and you need something passed, but now, there's this memory of you taking this person's milk, and now, you gotta go to this person and convince them to do something right. I said, "Deshaun, what are you gonna do?" He said, "Well, Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna show it with a big carton of milk." And I was like, "That's my dude," right? He got it, right? And making it relatable and understandable, like, we have to start that early in the process, right? And, and, and though there are tremendous sacrifices that have been made for us to be able to be in a position where we can actually have democracy, it has to be relatable. We have to connect it. You know, municipal election, didn't I just vote? How many times have you heard that? Wait a minute, there's another one?
Right.
Think about how many times you're gonna hear, wait a minute, Brandon didn't win?
Right.
We gotta vote again April 4th. Yes, April 4th, BrandonForChicago.com. Thank you. You know, it has to be connected. And this is why, when we talk about policy points, you know, whether it's childcare for all, whether it's youth employment, whether it's free transportation, opening up our parks and recreation so there are activities, expanding our arts curriculum, and actually really building up art in the city of Chicago. I'm not saying that's necessarily gonna cause an influx, but now, at least you're getting people to pay attention.
Right.
And then, honestly, you all, look, the, the reality of the fact is that organizing is still a major part in driving turnout.
Yeah.
Make no mistake about it. Listen, I know the people like, like, I'm Generation X, so I know I'm the elder in the rooms. I'm trying to say a lot of smart stuff. I feel a lot of pressure. But, but I've heard the stories from my father, and we were just in Selma. And this past weekend, commemorating Bloody Sunday. And I remember the first time I went to Selma with Reverend Jackson. He said something to me that was very powerful. He said, "When we were marching from town to town to get to that bridge, he said, 'Brandon, we were barely picking up two or three people along the way.'"
Wow.
He said, "In many cases, you would see these, this footage of like these really sad-looking people singing these great Negro spirituals." He was like, "Man, we were tired." And now, you know, several years later, everybody and their mama was on the Edmund Pettus Bridge.
Right.
But it's not like organizing was easier then.
Right.
It's gonna take us to continue to work to engage people and have mercy on folks, right? Not, not saying that they should avoid the responsibility, but also recognizing that organizing is the greatest motivator to get anything done, even voting.
Preach. Preach, pastor. All right, we're gonna take a break real quick. All right, we are back. So, we only have a little bit more time left, so we're gonna try to get through a few more questions as quickly as possible. The next question I want to focus on is about cannabis or weed. We actually, since it's legal here, we got a blunt for you. Can you go ahead and?
No, I'm just joking.
I'm just joking. I get, your whole staff just got so stressed out.
And I'm asking, why are you joking?
Yeah. Yeah, you just picked up a lot of bugs. No, but seriously, we legalized weed here in Chicago and in Illinois. We're really proud of that. We passed a very quote-unquote equitable version of cannabis bill, but the industry is still dominated by white men. What are you gonna do as mayor to ensure that Black and Brown people have access to cannabis industry? And why is that so important?
Yeah, it's, it's incredibly important because there's a book that I would encourage folks to read, skim through it if you want. It's called Locking Up Our Own. And, and it really lays out, you know, this particular city council member was a white dude who was working to decriminalize marijuana 40 years ago in DC at the height of a time where crime was, was exploding in DC, much like what we are experiencing right now. Much like what we are experiencing right now. But there was so many crimes quote unquote associated with marijuana. The people of DC just could not figure it out, and in fact. Um there were major political players and black leaders at the time that were incredibly oppositional to that idea. Now, here we are, fast forward, um you know, the very people who were criminalized by it. By a system and a structure. Has rebranded and recreated an opportunity to actually make more money. Uh from from the criminalization, but now the legalization of it. And so as mayor of the city of Chicago, you know, I'm prepared to organize with community groups all over the city of Chicago. To not just figure out how we amend legislation. But the revenue that we generate from uh the legalization of cannabis. How do we make sure that it is going to be in distributed in an equitable way to create more economic opportunities? For our people to actually experience the. The largesse of what this industry is gonna bring. And that requires us to be intentional about it and of course, telling people the truth. And there's an appetite for it, I believe that there are members of the city council who understood the value uh to to a greater extent. To how the city of Chicago could play a greater role in pushing Springfield to do right by people who've been harmed by this so-called war. Which it really was a war on poverty, but um uh also a war against poor people, I should say. But but make sure that we are righting the wrongs of the past and doing it not just in an equitable way, but a way in which we can actually build and lift up our communities. By real participation, job opportunities, real job opportunities, real ownership opportunities for it, and I'm committed to doing that. And you have to know, by the way, as the grandson and son of pastors. The fact that I am fighting for the legalization and the expansion of the cannabis industry. All I can say is grandpa is for a great cause.
It is grandpa. Y'all, anything y'all wanna add?
I'll just say, you might be the first political candidate I've ever heard reference locking up our own. But I think exactly that, like this is like it's legalized, but it's still not fully decriminalized. We still have people who are serving sentences over weed and drug charges, that doesn't make any sense to me. And it was legalized, I supported it because I wanted to see like Chicagoans like make their businesses and make money off of this industry that's already existing. And not bring in like billionaire white companies and set up in California and Nevada and places that aren't Illinois. And like, that's just where I'm at with it.
I feel you. So the next question I wanna ask you, you you spoke a little bit about um how the uh criminalization of cannabis was a war. Against poor people, uh there's another war mounting in our society right now, which is a war against trans people. As mayor, can you talk to us a little bit about what you are going to do to protect trans women in our society? And not only protect, but uplift and center trans woman culture, also happy International Women's Day. Just wanna say that, but go ahead.
Yeah, and there's obviously, um you know, well documentation of black trans women in particular being targeted. And so this really requires an office um under the office of the mayor that deals specifically. With not just LGBTQ plus, but in office and full support of trans women. And having leadership within my administration that has delivered in these shared experiences. You know, I'm, you know, quite provoked in this moment because, you know, when you think about all of the trauma that we are enduring. Black trans women have been so harmed. Because of just hatred. You know, as county commissioner, I introduced um a resolution called the Budget for Black Lives. And I won't go into details around it, but it was motivated by the same. Motivation that A. Philip Randolph um and Barrett Ruston, when they put together the Freedom for All budget that led to the Great Society, right? So it's, you know, again, this is why you have to have history, particularly black history, because. There were black candidates that called it symbolism, because they apparently did not understand the historical relevance. To how the budget for black lives was motivated by the budget, the Freedom Budget for All that led the government to push for more guaranteed rights. And so I'm saying all that to say is because it led to some of the greatest investments, particularly in violence prevention that we've. Uh seen in the history of Cook County government and many of the programs that we look to support, there's a um. An organization on the west side of Chicago, it's the Covenant House, where they they help support um unhoused young people. And the number of trans women who rely upon um these services because families are rejecting them and putting them out. My administration is gonna be very intentional about housing, education, jobs, making sure that there's, to your point, there's real affirming. Of of trans women and making sure that they they play a major role in in how we carry out real justice. Look, I I don't have the lived experience of of trans women, not not not, I don't, not even close probably. I know what it's like to feel rejected, but to be denied your humanity and to experience in many instances, trauma from your own family. Like, that's tough to recover from, you know what I mean? And I don't, I don't, I take that real seriously, because we're losing lives because people are identifying with what feels natural. And why we mad? You know what I'm saying? You know what I mean, exactly. So that's, I believe it's gotta be quintessential apart, uh connected to our overall. Commitment to really loving people. And and I appreciate like Freddie really lifting that up because it is something that, you know, if I could just be especially vulnerable. You know, how many, how many black boys grow up hearing, not only I love you, but it's okay for you to repeat it? And as a grown black man, Generation X, I can tell you, I love my father, but the dude did not give out high fives and hugs. I'm just saying, he didn't start smiling until he became a grandparent, which is another dynamic that just really pisses me off. Like, I didn't know he liked kids until I had him. But but the term and the feeling of love being expressed by a black man to. Black trans women feeling that love. Like, and you can do that by policy, but we can also demonstrate it and do it um in action indeed as well.
That's beautiful, that's beautiful, uh we're almost running out of time, so I wanna, I wanna do some quick questions real quick. So I'mma I'mma say a word, and I want all three of y'all to give me one word responses, all right? Booted cars.
Sucks.
Hate. Not ideal. Cubs or white Sox?
Sox.
Sox.
Grew up watching WGN. It was the only station we had.
That's like the best political answer. Uncle Remus or Harold's?
Oh, man, I'm West Side. Uncle Remus, yeah, shout out to you, Charmin, keep up the good work, we need some turkey tips, dawg, for the new. With them vegan options.
Sharks or JJ's?
Uh I'm going with JJ, J and J's, yeah.
I think I'm after do JJ's as well.
I'm Sharks all day.
RuPaul's Drag Race, favorite drag artist?
Shay Kula.
Do you really think I know drag artists? I mean, y'all have a whole lot of confidence, confidence, can we do this? Can you all give me three, and when I'm mayor, I'll come back and I'll tell you who my.
Deal, deal, deal.
Phew, now that's a political answer.
Yeah, 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 we had to stomp you on one of. Cop Academy.
Oh, just awful.
Amen.
Yeah, it's bad.
Raised Bridges.
Trauma, trauma, yeah.
Lori Lightfoot.
Trauma, trauma, Lori Lightfoot. Red Line, Red Line, Blue Line, Jackson Tunnel. I actually love that tunnel, it's very entertaining.
You love it?
I hope my breath the whole time.
I'd be moving quick, but I'm like, dang, this is crazy.
I kinda like doing it with the headphones in your ear, just feel like you're in a movie if you ignore the smell.
Blue Line.
All right, um I think that's a wrap, I do, you you have something you wanted to plug for your auntie.
That you mentioned.
Before we wrap.
So shout out to my Aunt Minnie and her wonderful homemade rolls. As the next mayor of the city of Chicago, we're gonna make sure that everybody gets a taste of Aunt Minnie's rolls.
Amen.
This is terrible.
All right, thanks, thanks Commissioner Johnson, we appreciate you.